Let's get started session will be recorded. Um, and later we'll be shared on YouTube. So uh we can always look at the. A video later on if people are interested. So welcome everyone uh to this yes week special section two uh title programming autonomous machines. Um uh autonomous machine it's a uh uh. We're promising area of computing nowadays, but how the program this machine still remains a. Challenge, especially from a industry perspective. Uh today we're honored to have five speakers now to discuss this issue and their kind of edge research on uh programming autonomous machines. First of all, speak today myself, I'm Shao Shan Liu, I work in the industry for the past ten years. Uh especially on autonomous uh machines, uh autonomous vehicles, robots and so on. Uh Professor Xiaoming Li is from uh University of Delaware uh and world expert in uh programming languages. Doctor Tong Sun Geng, uh she's a research scientist at U C R one focusing on systems research more recently on uh autonomous machine computing. Uh. Fekman, uh he's at a uh France uh doing research in the. Autonomous machine computing, particularly in M L I R, utilizing M L I R. For terms machine computing, finally we have Professor Goldiot from U C R one. Uh he's a world expert in computer architecture and recently uh focus more on autonomous machine computing. Uh so here are the speakers of today. Uh so the flow of today's talk will go as follows. Uh first I will present. Industry challenge on autonomous machine computing. And then uh the wish list we hope for from the industry. Then we will discuss high level programming, uh especially programming languages for autonomous machine computing. Uh once we have a high level programming language, then we will delve into what kind of system software support, especially on compiler and runtime. Uh for autonomous machine computer to support autonomous machine computing and today the infrastructure really. It's non-existent, uh but that presents itself a lot of opportunities for further research and development. Uh and then we will demonstrate a prototype with description results on our customer uh computing languages. And finally, Professor Gold would do a concluding remark regarding the overall direction of this whole new area of research. So let's um get started. Uh first I would discuss uh some industry challenges that we have observed. Um from various uh deploying various type of autonomous machines. So personally, I work in uh autonomous machine computing uh on the figure you can see a typical pipeline. Of a autonomous machine system. Uh in this particular case, it's a level four autonomous driving system. On the left side, you can see uh the system is connected to a lot of physical sensors. Such as millimeter wave radar to track different kind of objects, detect different kind of objects. Cameras, uh which is a very typical type of sensor, particularly for Tesla, they are uh compute computer vision center. So they. Uh focus on only one sensors camera. And then Li D A R is a very popular sensor, not only for three D perception, but also for localization. Uh then you typically have the G P S I M U unit for localization. Uh so at the beginning or the front end of the pipeline, you see huge amount data rushing into the pipeline. Then they go through different stages to the perception, three D perception, perception fusion localization. Um then uh when they reach this point, the whole amount of data shrink by twenty volt becomes five megabytes per second. Uh then this trend continues as we go through the tracking stage. It's generating two hundred K Bs per second, then we go through prediction and planning and control. At the end, it generates five K a bit. Uh kilobyte of data uh per second. So you you see a uh in rush of huge amount of data. And the uh outcome is a very small amount of control data. That's a typical autonomous machine pipeline, whether it's a full blown. Uh autonomous driving system like this one or a very small robotic system. If you examine this pipeline, it's really uh a data flow pattern that exhibits. Uh the data to rushing, go through the stages, then then produce results continuously. So that's a key observation we make on autonomous machine computing today. But the way we program this autonomous machine today or the computing system to support. This kind of autonomous machine today are not data flow centric yet. Uh mostly we're still using traditional computer architectures for this kind of workloads. Then we have implemented a system uh to kind of facilitate a data flow like computing paradigm. Uh on the left side, you see a lot of sensors rushing in. Uh then we utilize a F P G A platform to do pre-processing of the sensor data. As you can see in the previous graph, there's hundreds of megabytes data rushing in. So the first step is to filter down the amount of data for F P G A platform. Uh then once that's done, um the perception would happen in the GPU of the main server. Also, the planning control would uh uh happen in the CPUs in the main server. Uh so we utilize a lot of heterogeneous computing components in order to implement that pipeline. Um because we don't have a data flow like computer architecture today to support this kind of computing. So we have to combine. Whatever off the shelf components that we can acquire to emulate that data flow pattern. Uh by the way, uh for every slide, I have listed the reference down here. So for this particular work, it's a. Appears in a micro twenty twenty to describe a commercial system developed by perception. So as you can see, the system are for robotics or for autonomous machines are getting more and more complex. To further complicated story, now we have a new paradigm in autonomous driving. Called infrastructure vehicle cooperative autonomous driving. Its core is that uh it relies on roadside units or system on road to provide sensing or perception datas. To aid the decision making of the vehicle. So now you complicated picture with system on road to aid system on vehicle. Um and then also you have a cloud component called intelligent transportation cloud system to support the whole computing. So it's ever more. Complex compared to a uh the on vehicle only computing systems. So how do we manage this complexity? Uh how can programmers to manage this kind of complexity remains a challenge today. Uh for this particular work, it appears in uh twenty twenty one. Design Automation Conference to describe a fully infrastructure vehicle cooperative autonomous driving system. So what we see from the industry today is that um it's very hard to program these machines. Uh as they get more complicated, as they have to deal with. Uh more changing environments, how do you program those? Uh usually rely on C programming. Uh to implement the fundamental uh algorithms. Then uh standard practice is to use a Ross or Ross like middleware to connect the components together. Then you start the tuning process. Uh this is very slow, uh and that's um in a way impeding the progress of the whole industry. Our wish list is shown here. We have different kind of application on top. And then programmers or the application programs for robots for autonomous machine, they should only focus on application programming. But we don't have a of uh application programming language or high level language today to help them uh to connect the basic operators. Uh to facilitate different kind of or to implement different kind of uh autonomous machines. For example, the basic operators could be localization, could be uh communication, could be planning, control, could be perception. There are only um about ten twenty types of basic operators you can use. And for each basic operator, you might have different flavors. Then, once you finish dealing with the basic operators, the next step is that you are underlying. Uh you are dealing with a lot of compute substrates. It could be different type of CPUs, different type GPUs, DSPs, FPGAs, accelerators and so on and so forth. If you were to map each uh each operator onto each of the substrate, it would be a huge amount of work. And uh not only a huge amount of work, but we have the different works, different companies have to implement different kind of. Uh compute units or compute operators on these different compute structures. That's a a lot of work and it's a waste of effort. If we could have a runtime to consolidate all these efforts, that will make the whole industry more efficient. But unfortunately today, uh not only we are missing the high level. Uh autonomous machine application programming language. Uh also, we are missing the autonomous machine runtime to map different operators onto different heterogeneous components. And hopefully for this uh session, we can inspire. Uh most researchers to join force to solve this problem. We do think this problem is highly interesting, highly motivating. Uh so that's the conclusion from the industry. Uh that's the challenge we face in the industry today. Uh next, we will. Hand over to next speaker. Uh Doctor Tong Sun Geng, she will talk about the research on high level programming as well as a. Um the uh state of the art approaches from other research groups. Uh Doctor Geng, please take over.
Uh hello, everyone. Uh please move to next slide. Um and today, uh I will briefly introduce our programming model. Uh the high level language should be able to consistently and precisely describe the applications. Um there is a example here uh is for the cleaning robot system. Uh so we can see the first few lines are the requirements uh statements which specify the sensor configuration and. Uh performance uh performance requirements. The next several lines, including the numbers, um uh as uh describe the computational graph of of the applications. Um so the high level language should be able to consistently and precisely describe uh the application. That's uh that's the most important part. Next slide, please. Um so when we. Uh next slide, please. Uh so when we define the high level language, so the next step is how to transfer it into the uh low level task. Uh which can be, it should be directly on the uh uh on the uh right on onto the hardware resources. Uh so please move um forwards. Uh forwards, please. Uh in slice ten in forwards uh in backwards, in backwards, sorry, backwards. Uh in backwards. And backwards here. Uh so here, uh sorry for that, it's um um we can see the um. The high level language is it relies on the the system software, we should be able to uh optimize the computational graph. And map the graphs uh onto suitable soft uh hardware devices to satisfy the um. Real time constraints. Uh so that's the that's the 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 software, the software uh will be the bridge. Uh next slide, please. Um. The software will be the bridge to for the uh between the high level languages and uh hardware resources. Uh. Next slide, please. So aiming at this goal, uh our model is a data flow oriented and functional programming based cross layer pro- uh program execution model. So as we see in the high level, we choose a functional programming. Uh which provides uh an efficient way to analyze and describe the uh the behavior of autonomous machine system. Um the primary aspects of the functional programming uh are lambdas, map operations and recursion. Uh these three aspects uh are also supported by most of the of the modern languages. So um Frog and Yampah are two of them, two of the famous functional languages. Uh what they used in the in that industry. Uh so in the middle level, uh the open source library such as Open C V, which provides a lot of optimized applications. Uh which can be run onto multiple hardware resources. Uh but in compiler side, uh building the reusable and extensible I R. For hit uh for the heterogeneous hardware uh a one of the goal. So here the M L I R will be one of the where where be our uh one of the good very good options. And in further, to avoid the timing violation, uh which frequently occur in autonomous machine system. The compiler need to optimize the computational graph and also allocated the memory and buffers to facilitate the communication. Between graphs and the graph nodes. Um so. In the low level, uh the runtime system um should be able to map and schedules. Graphs provided by the compiler uh and on to different hardware resources and also can be able to trace the. Uh execution time of the tasks. Uh different types of runtime system are developed for the auton- auton- autonomous machine system. And so I list three of them here and all three of them have different advantage and disadvantages. And to operate across a a variety of. Uh environments with hard with limited hardware resources, which is our goal. So we choose the adaptive runtime system. Um so. It should be able to adaptively allocated the fun green and graphs tasks onto uh plugin enabled hardware resources. And also can dynamically map and remap the tasks onto different hardware resources. Uh based on the real time requirement um to um but here the real time, the the real time situation. Includes the the machine may uh run on to different scenarios and also um. The available hardware resources may be it may be different. Uh so this is a from the high level, uh from the high level is uh to describe our program model. So um we can move on to the next section, we were did it were this. We invented describe the more details about the our methodology.
Thank you, Doctor Geng. I would like uh to add a short note. Um um regarding high level programming language, as you can see here, uh it's a lambda expression. Uh a data flow like language to program a robot vacuum. Uh typically a robot vacuum, when you implement the whole system, it takes about. Uh twenty thirty thousand lines of code at least. Uh but for application programmers, it's very uh unreasonable for for them to write that amount of code. So a high level language that we propose would uh only demand only a few lines of code. For example, here only three lines of code to connect all the essential components. And the required statements are basically contracts between hardware and software. Uh so it requires a I R sensor at frequency fifty hertz. Uh if that can be satisfied, then we can move to the next slide. It requires a camera. At a set resolution, for example, three twenty by two forty with a frequency more than thirty hertz. Uh once you go through all the required, our assumption is that uh the hardware can satisfy your requirement. Then the next step is just to connect all the notes, the compute notes to form a data flow graph and it starts running. So simply three lines of code, you can have a vacuum cleaner and that's our plan and that's what we meant by high level language. And next we will have um uh Stefan uh to uh tell us how to make. A system software designed to in order to support that high level language. Uh Stefan, please take over.
Thank you, Shao Shan. Uh so I'm Stefan Zikerman, I'm from Eighty Laboratory. Uh and can move on to the next slide, please. Um so Tong Chen described the. Uh the high level language uh with compliments from Shao Shan and. If you have a language, you need a compiler and and a system software for it. Uh so the compiler in our case obviously needs to obey some constraints because we are dealing with real time systems. Uh but also we are dealing with the highly heterogeneous uh targets. Uh in terms of hardware, so we need to be able to perform efficient resource mapping and real time deadlines satisfaction. But we need to also be able to express them in the language. Uh the other thing is, uh we want our language uh to understand what an autonomous machine is. So some intrinsic should be available uh to the programmer to maintain this high level we're looking for. Um. Which means ideally there should be very little low level uh programming unless there's a specific computation that is not already known by the system. And uh most computations related to autonomous machines should be already known by the compiler system. Uh we can move on. Um we envision two things. Uh one is we need annotations. Uh annotations can be requirements or hints. Requirements are very close to what we saw in the lambda expressions before, in the sense that uh we know what we're targeting, we know the timings. And so basically, uh we tell the system, this is how it should work. Uh the uh here, I'm talking about uh device mapping, so computer device mapping. But we will see that I need the same kinds of requirements for actual uh the real time deadlines. The other thing is hints. Uh hints are more about prototyping, I would say, within the sense that. Um I know the nature of the computation, I know this is CPU bound, um memory bound, I know that uh my my experience or my. Uh various uh previous implementations show me that uh a type of computation is well suited for GPUs or DSPs or CPU. You know, let's say if you have a lot of branchy branch uh branches, CPU is probably a good idea. And in that case, um I hint at the compiler that I want that kind of device to map the computation onto. However. The compiler is free to ignore me and the runtime system underneath is a we will see is able to ignore me also if there's a better or. Better opportunity dynamically speaking. Uh we can move to the next slide, please. Uh what what I call intrinsics are more specifically what I would call interesting functions. Uh so I already mentioned it a little bit. But the idea is, uh for example, when I have a localization task, uh I have some kind of feature extraction I have to do from a stream of pixels. Um so. Uh of course, that means that I need to have a contract between the high level language and my compiler and beneath that my runtime system. Uh for example, uh about what a three of pixel is, right? Uh if I'm on grayscale or which is often the case. Or something else, I need to to be able to uh to know that the contract is fulfilled. If that is the case, then I I I I can have an actual basically uh intrinsic like intrinsic library that the compiler already knows. It's a bit like uh in C, for example, the compiler that understands C. Uh for the for the compiler, the C library is a magic library, basically. It knows what M S does, even though technically it's supposed to be a function and should be opaque. The compiler knows exactly what's happening inside uh and what's useful. Uh which allows you to do some optimizations or safety uh safety related uh operations. When it comes to uh real time constraints, this is more classical and we need to express those constraints, we need to. Express requirements, especially in the case of hard runtime constraints. This is especially uh important when we consider autonomous uh machines and vehicles, for example. Uh that need to move at high speeds. Uh I need to be sure uh that my deadlines will be met. Um and again, these are annotations provided at a high level that will then be translated by the compiler to the runtime system. At a lower level, so they will be lowered for so that the runtime understands them. Um what's important here is because of those real time constraints, now uh as Shao Shan said. We have uh a graph that we start to form, either I I would say it's a semi static graph and I will uh go back on that in the next slide. Uh we can move on now. Uh so if we go back to the 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 schema as we we had before, the block the block diagrams. Now I have a high level language which has requirements for device mapping and runtime deadlines. I have also potential hints. Uh in the development phase, uh and I still have this uh highly heterogeneous set of uh devices I need to target. Uh next slide, please. So for the runtime system now, uh this is a a layer that I need to in introduce between the compiler and the the hardware, of course. Uh obviously, we want our runtime system to be very low overhead, especially in in terms of resource management. Uh it needs to be efficient at uh mapping computations to devices and of course it needs to satisfy runtime constraints. Um the we in terms of constraints, uh they are mandatory, the runtime cannot ignore them, however. Uh it should be able to understand or to figure out if a given schedule could not be satisfied anyway. Uh of course, we want minimal scheduling overhead, which is really what we want to do uh for any kind of runtime system. Uh next slide, please. Uh like I said before, the target hardware is highly heterogeneous. Uh we have not only performance, but potentially power and energy goals. Uh if you consider, for example, electric uh or battery base, basically of uh machines. Uh and the the other problem is depending on the target hardware, uh the the profile for energy and power consumption can vary widely widely. And the same is true for performance. So there's not one size fits all kind of uh. Uh code generation we can perform here or runtime or runtime scheduling we can perform. Um the high level annotations we mentioned before uh should be, in our case, should be expressed as metadata fields. We have work, uh previous work, not in the case of autonomous machines, but in case of uh heterogeneous computing. Where we exploited successfully metadata fields to explain um. To express the need to for a given task to run as a GPU task or CPU task or something else. Um the 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 hints and requirements of you of course should be obeyed, but they can be, especially the hints can be ignored. Uh and like I said, uh the task graph that is built uh can be already uh if it's. Analyzable by the compiler uh and the compiler can already tell me that the schedule cannot work, it will tell me at that point, but. The runtime could dynamically figure out that some constraints cannot be satisfied. Uh again, this is mostly useful for the development phase because uh when you're in production, you don't want your uh runtime to crash, basically. Uh next slide, next slide, please. Uh so now I've added the O S runtime uh layer. I you can see I I've added a block which was which is libraries and we will see the next slides. That is really more like uh specific intrinsic libraries. Uh we can move on to the next slide. So now the problem is, I I talked about a compiler, I talked about runtime and what I want is to bridge the gap. Uh Tong Chen, uh Dr. Geng basically uh basically uh mentioned that we had a DSL model. So the idea is how can I use uh uh maybe a family of um. Domain specific languages that are functional or functionally oriented or at least declarative in some ways. Uh and that are sufficiently flexible. So one way of doing that is. Well, to really have a DSL, but uh that DSL is lowered down to an intermediate representation. Uh that is uh very very way, very much geared towards uh autonomous machines. So. Ideally, if we can have orthogonal I Rs, it's even better. So for example, navigation localization often require this feature extraction and the matching of uh the pixel streams. Uh we can, we have some other tasks related to movement detection, object avoidance, that kind of things. And we figured out that uh a potential good candidate is M L I R, which was proposed by Google a few years ago. Um because they basically added to M M I R uh for the same kind of reason, which is we have a wide bird wide uh. Uh family type that we have many, many types of languages and we need to actually make them work together. Uh because we have, for example, heterogeneous hardware to take care of. So again, uh DSPs, GPUs, CPUs, for example. The good thing also about M L I R is that it can both lower, uh it can both be lower to uh machine instructions, but also. It can be uh lowered to API calls, so it can still call high level code. Uh we can move on to the next slide, please. So this is uh basically uh an example of what could happen in that that kind of design. So. Right now I have all my layers uh uh for my system software. I can move on to the next slide. So what you can see is that multi-core DSPs and FPGAs are already busy running some task. So if we move to the next slide, now uh I've uh expressed some runtime requirements and device mapping requirements pertaining to uh the localization task, for example. Uh we can move on to the next slide. And at that point, uh we say, okay, I want uh the ORB task to be a GPU geared task and it's a requirement, so. Uh my runtime should try to obey that. We can move on to the next slide. In that case, the GPU is free, so of course the task can run directly. Uh and now we will see what happens if the one of the devices is busy. We can move on to the next slide. So you know, the orange arrows basically represents uh a requirement for the match task after the streaming is done for the pixel stream for the ORB task. Uh and uh they require a CPU to be free, which is not the case here. Uh also, there's a data dependence between the GPU task and the CPU task, so. Uh both uh both the resources and the data need to be satisfied uh as dependencies before we can run the task. And the next slide should show that. Uh at that point, uh I still have DSPs and FPGAs busy, but now I have some tasks, hopefully they are uh computing something useful. Uh next slide. And finally, this is for the hint. So I put that between parentheses, uh, to say I want that, but I'm not sure I can get it. And you can see that, uh, in that case, the GPU is busy. So my task is put in a waiting pool. In the next slide, what happens? Is that the DSP got free at one point and I do have a DSP kernel available. And the resource manager decides that for the deadlines, we, I would, that the DSP should be used in that case. Um, and this is just an example of what we would like to happen, uh, for a design, uh, and for prototyping stage. Uh, all right, I'm done with, uh, the system software part.
With this, we will head over to Professor Li to discuss the engineering prototype that he developed. To illustrate the idea of autonomous machine programming. Professor Li, please take over.
So, uh, good day, everyone. So I'm going to discuss that our initial study. Let's address a core challenge in programming autonomous machines. That is the handling of the support of performance contract and the handling of, uh, performance variability in the system. So next please. So, uh, the, why we call it a core challenge is because that, uh, if we still take the same, uh, model in our general programming. That is using the best effort, then there is really not too much issue. And the unique challenge in programming autonomous machine is that we need to maintain a strict, a stricter performance contract. On various levels of the system, from the computation kernels to, uh, subcomponent and, uh. For, uh, to, and to, and, uh, working flows. Uh, if we talk about performance variability, that can come from multiple, uh, factors. First is that it might be from the computation work node itself. For example, when we, uh, use different kernel sizes and, uh, algorithms, we have, uh. Your network algorithms, we have performed quite differently. Another potential cause for performance variability is architectural constraint. And so, uh, in many, uh, in many cases, the autonomous machines are built on. Computer resources that cannot satisfy the combined peak requirement for all computation work node component. So in those cases, competition will happen. And the, the third potential cause for performance variability is input characteristics. The, the, the input has a change from frame for to frame, now might be variable. Sizes for the features, the, uh, com- different complexity for those features. And sometimes we might also experience burst of input features. Those we have caused the work node, the computation work node to change quite a bit. And the last course, uh, that we, we see that to be dear to deal with is the competition for resources. That's said is that the, the sharing of resource happened at, was at, uh, multiple levels from the system. To subcomponent, subcomponent level. Next please. Uh, so what, uh, so if we consider all those factors. And then it's become clear that what the key challenge for program language and compiler for autonomous machines. That is we needed to deal with the environment, that we are not just a compiler for one work note. But we are compiling many algorithms and they must work together, such as sensing, perception, learning, decision making, et cetera. Each, we needed to respect each subcomponent's own performance contract. And also the compiler and the language must work together to guarantee an overall performance contract. All these constraints must, must be coexist and there must be a way to test that. While we can guarantee offline, or if that fails, what, what, uh, remedy actions we need to take. Next slide, please. Uh, so in, uh, here is our initial case study to, uh, demonstrate how we can do two tasks. Uh, in our, in our pursuing of the goal. First is that how can be provide a performance. Uh, envelope of some of computation work note. And the second is that we want to demonstrate the, uh, initial capability of the system that, uh. We propose to adapt to these performance abilities. Next place. So, uh, let's start from the basic level. Here is the, just a very simple performance curve to show the. It algorithm level depending on implementation strategies, we can have quite different performance, uh, envelope. So here we use a, uh, very simple computation kernel, the convolution neural network. And, uh, if you have used the scene before, you know, that there are two basic implementation strategies. One is based on matrix, uh, one is based on the matrix presentation and the other is based on FPT. Uh, if we draw plot their performance against, uh, basic algorithm parameter, the kernel size, we can see is that the. Now are clearly, uh, clearly, uh, areas of kernel sizes. Let the matrix based, uh, implementation perform better. And there are clear cases that, uh, all the cases in other areas, the FFT based implementation means. So depends on, that means that we needed to make a choice at compilation level based on the input, uh, based on the. Language configurations to make the right choice. Next please. And, uh, here we demonstrate that, uh, demonstrate that if we provide the performance of, uh, typical working node. ORB plus matching, how big the performance variability can be. Uh, what we do is that we run ORB plus matching, uh, changing the implementation parameters. And the measure the throughput, measure the performance with regard to three metrics. Latency throughput and variability. And we show the surface of what we get. Uh, the take home message from this figure is that there are big, uh, there are big. Uh, differences in the, when we change the implementation parameters with regard to throughput, latency and variability. If we want our implementation wanted to achieve one specific trade off point among these three metrics. We do need to carefully select how we compile the code and how, what implementation parameter values we should choose. Next slide, please. And the last, the last performance figure from our initial study is that, you can see that again, we use the same work, uh. Computation work node, ORB plus matching. And in this case, we have three stages of computation. Attack, describe and match. And if we stick to one implementation strategy. The performance is presented by one color. Uh, when I say it's like that, now is across the stages, now is really no single implementation strategy. Including the choice of parameters and the devices that will be wrong. The work node on, there is no really single winner across all the stages. We still let the if building in some very simple heuristics, we can adapt the implementation to different scenarios. And we can maintain, uh, overall best performance guarantee. Next please. And to summarize this part of our discussion. Uh, we do have a few points that I think worth our further effort to research. First is that, how do we have, uh. Uh, how do we have a powerful performance profile capability for all the work node involving autonomous driving? Second is that, what are the choices in our strategy to maintain, to guarantee performance contract? Should we use a static approach or dynamic approach? And the third is that, uh, in this, how we can build in the user heuristic, user input. Into the development process, that including how, whether we want to use a pragmas to, uh, express user input. And or we can use some runtime heuristics to support the incorporation of user knowledge. Uh, that's con- conclude this segment of the discussion.
Thank you very much, Professor Li. Uh, next we will have, uh, Professor Goldier. Uh, giving us the concluding remarks. After that, then we will take a few questions and start our discussion. Uh, the station source, Professor Goldil.
Uh, good afternoon. Thank you, uh, Xiaoshen, for your introduction. Uh, this is, as you can see, a, uh, very, uh, tight research group that we have had together. Uh, as a matter of fact, I'm proud to, uh, remind you that two of the members, uh. I had the honor of advising for their PhD and that's Dr. Dan Gang and Dr. Liu. So, uh, what I'd like to observe and, uh, have you take home, uh, with you. Is the fact that this, uh, is really the land of plenty. There have been plenty of successes already. You've seen them. We are in the process of designing highly efficient embedded systems that are capable of extremely hard real time operations. Through, uh, appropriate hardware software frameworks and, uh, high level languages that are. Uh, appropriate for the environment, for the, the, the application environment that we are looking at. And namely the functional slash data flow languages that you've just heard of. Uh, there are some existing prototypes, uh, for one thing, I'd like to emphasize. Uh, Professor Liu's perceptance, uh, efforts. And, uh, you've heard some of that already. I encourage you to go and look at the references for that, uh, for that. Next slide, please. Again, plenty, plenty of promises in the short term. The autonomous driving systems that we have been hearing of pro- promise increased safety. In the long term, there are some profound social economic changes that are on the horizon. Improved transportation systems, uh, lower traffic congestion that could really change our everyday lives. And also, as we envision and will discuss it next, in the next slide, multiple unseen applications. The hard real time constraints that we have been discussing, the hard, um, uh. Yeah, the highly efficient computational systems that we have described should allow us to go to the next level. In terms of navigating an environment. And the last one is, there's plenty of work left for everybody. The terms of industry, there's a large market potential that industry will certainly seek to fail. In academia, well, we should be, uh, and I'm speaking for myself here, pushing the envelope. We should be finding new applications, one of them here, just throwing it at you. Uh, localization for sight impaired, sight impaired, uh, persons, who could really imagine. Uh, sight impaired person getting in better view, so to speak, of their environment and being able to navigate it better. But the big one, uh, social, legal, ethical implications, that is something that, uh, we have to work out. And it's going to work out perhaps, and I would, as a, uh, member of the IEEE and the IEEE Computer Society. Look forward for professional societies to lead the way in providing guidelines. In those social, legal and ethical implications that this work will have. With this, I'd like to hand it back over to Dr. Liu.
Thank you so much, Professor Goldil. Uh, people in the audience, if you have a question, feel free to unmute yourself to ask or enter into the chat. Uh, but, but before that, uh, we can start, uh, uh, before we have a question, we can start our discussion. Uh, first I have a question for, uh, Professor Goldil, uh, as you have decades of experience in, um. Cutting edge research in computer science and computer engineering. Uh, the reason we brought up this work. Uh, programming autonomous machines is because we face a huge, huge challenge in the industry. Uh, we could not hire qualified engineers, uh, to, who understand both the system side and the algorithm side. Because the training is. The algorithm training.
Uh, Xiaoshen, Liu, we're losing you.
Thing is.
Xiaoshen, we are losing you, so I think I'll take over and, uh, answer what I think is your question. Uh, you are saying that.
As the system training is, uh, recommend the university system to then supply, uh, to the industry to.
Technical difficulties. Uh, I, I just like to, uh, kind of answer, uh, what I think is Xiaoshen Liu's question. Uh, indeed, perhaps, uh, on this slide, what I should have emphasized is also the fact that there is, they need to be. A collaboration, a very tight collaboration with all the entities that I have outlined here. And nowhere is it more evident than, uh, between industry and, uh, in academia. Because the two are essentially by, uh, almost by design, uh, quite complementary.
Thank you so much, Professor Goldil. Sorry that the last, uh, due to connect the issues. Uh, the next question I have is, uh, towards, uh, Stefan. Uh, you mentioned in your presentation, there are so many, uh, blocks. Uh, what are the blocks that are already available today and what needs to be, uh, developed?
When it comes to, for the, for the actual blocks, so, uh, for example, MLIR, which I mentioned, uh. Is a very promising technology and the, the people at Google have already provided a lot of, uh, inter- intermediate representation blocks. But, uh, for their own auto, uh, machine learning, uh, projects especially. Uh, so there's everything to build there, uh, in the case of autonomous machines. Uh, but when it comes to actual, um, kernels already existing, when you look at OpenCV and, uh, other libraries like that. You already have some of them which have already, uh, provided some, uh, code that is CPU friendly or GPU friendly or. Dot, 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 basically. However, the problem is, uh, you always need the next optimized version for the next version of. The embedded GPU or DSP you want to use for your targets. So there will always be some kind of tweaking you we need, but what we hope is that. Uh, since we already have, we have a, a wide family of kernels available. Um, we will converge much faster towards the, the this optimized stuff. Uh, so Xiaoshen just say, he's just saying that, uh, unfortunately he has connections issues. So I may have to, to take over for him, uh, hosting and taking questions. The, so that to, to, to finish answering, uh, we do have a few, uh, building blocks. We are missing some of them. The problem Xiaoshen, uh, Dr. Dr. You, uh. Uh, introduced very, at a very early on is, uh, a lot of people use, for example, Ross, which is great. But it's very black boxy and at, at some point you need to open the black boxes to make it better. Uh, and we hope that this approach will help us, uh, design, uh, faster our systems. But also, uh, allow us to dive deeper in, uh, the optimization realm, both for energy, power and performance. Uh, by the way, is there any question, uh, in the audience, uh, with respect to anything we discussed so far, uh, in your talk?
Thank you, Stefan. Uh, I, I was saying, if I drop off, please take over. So I'm lucky that I'm still here. Um, so actually I have another question, uh, towards, uh, Dr. Lee. Uh, so, um, you have done one prototype, uh, R B, R B, it's a popular creator in robotics, uh, using many different agents. Um, what do you, you to implement and how would you initiate the next steps? Uh, because I, I believe that's a lot of work to implement for the operators. And, uh, since you, uh, you have decades of experience in the compiler programming domain. Uh, have you seen, uh, similar F being accomplished in the, in the past?
So, uh, let me, let me try to rephrase what Xiaoshen's question is, is that, uh. Uh, from our initial work on the case study, how can we extend it to a more general autonomous machine? Support a more generous, uh, more general autonomous machine working flow. And so my answer is really is that is probably going to a hierarchical approach. And the case study, uh, look at, uh, at a quite a basic level, that the more likely computation, uh, team level. So I would expect, uh, uh, the handling, the supportive of this contract. We are also correspondingly happy at, uh, multiple levels, working flow. Uh, yeah, uh, I don't expect to be, are going to have a most contracted. Uh now, I don't expect to be are going to have a performance contractor into the basic language operator. Level, but we do started to see the performance contractor into the. Uh kernels such as matrix operations, such as FFT. And also a little bit higher, such as convolution and the corresponding the convolution neural network. We also uh do see uh another appropriate level to describe and enforce performance. Contract is going to be the aggregated uh programming contract. So for example, like the. Uh RB plus matching and maybe maybe worse of, for example, the perception plus localization, localization. Plus perception plus prediction. So uh the the level for pro- the programming of. The programming construct level is just one issue in the discussion and another. Technical challenging, bigger challenge is that how we can break, help. Users to break a high-level performance contracting into contract of subcomponent. Uh so that if we can do that, that we are greater reduce the uh. Reduce the learning curve for users, because that they can just specify a higher level goal. And compiler or some other automated system can help the users to map. The the overall goal to the contract for subcomponent. So this, uh in summary, I do see that future research can happen in two directions. First is the hierarchy of performance contract. And the second is the capability to break down higher level or overall performance contracting to several. Uh several guarantees.
Oh thank you so much, Professor Li. Uh the last question, go back to Professor Gaudiol. You have decades of experience in data flow computing. Uh what can we learn from uh the old data flow architecture? Uh since since that uh in nobody called autonomous machine computing, uh they expedite the flow pad. Since the since the physical is not uh protected well. Uh so with that, uh since that uh we are all out of time, I would do conclude session. And thank you so much for the um for the industry perspective, I do this is a very, very promising field. If you're still a student performing research in this field, I encourage you to uh. But dive into robotic computing, um because we have gone through several stages of uh. Computing started from uh uh two decades ago, personal computing, then full computing, our computing each time. It brings revolution to industry and a lot of new company emerge, a lot of new opportunities also emerge. And it is a huge golden age opportunity uh for um machine computing. And with that, I would like to thank everyone and thank the presenters especially and also the organizers for this great session. And thanks so much. And with that, uh hopefully we can uh. Have each uh opportunity to collaborate in the future and uh see you next time. And thank you so much.